We'll call the council meeting together. No, it's not six o'clock, but it's 6:22 here on the 20th of June, so thank you all for coming. I'm gonna ask everybody to please rise for an invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Let us bow our heads. Oh Heavenly Father, please keep safe all those that are in public service, as we cherish them all, those serving the city, those serving the state, and those serving this nation. We ask that you protect our city, its citizens, and our visitors as we enter the heart of our summer season. We thank you for allowing us to be stewards of your island. We strive to protect it for generations to come. We pray for your guidance tonight, as we conduct the city business. For it is your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Great, please call the roll.
Councilmember Burkhart.
Here.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Towns.
Here.
Councilmember Lorenz.
Here.
Mayor Prokhorin Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Kinghorn.
Present.
Councilmember Rice.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Crumlin.
Present.
Administrator Hutter.
She will join us.
Attorney Jones, here.
Well, thank you all. Next item is the minutes in your package, a reading of general from May 23, 2017. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion and seconded. Any additions, directions, corrections, deletions? None heard? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. We're up to citizens' comments. Before I ask for citizens, I'll make a citizen's comment here. In that, you may recall, a couple of months ago, we asked a group of citizens, a citizens' committee if you will, to explore the potential for a farmer's market yet this year. They were busily about that. They were going to come in May, and they were potentially going to come in June, but they're still not ready yet. But they're still targeting, best I can understand, they're still targeting to start a farmer's market here on the island as soon as Sullivan's Island starts to wind down. They're working at the vent, looking at the vendors now, and the county park will play an important role as this thing rolls forward. So, we may, depending on how it all evolves, we may have to call a special meeting of council for just this one purpose, to consider a farmer's market as a city-sponsored event, or we may not, depending on how it plays out. But just to give you an update on where that that group is going at this point. So, I would now like to ask any other citizens that would like to come and address the council at this time. Anyone? Please, sir. Come up, give us your name and address.
I'm John Chapardi. Live at 103 Charleston Boulevard, which is just a stone's throw from the front door of the boathouse. This is why I'm here. You know, they started this year using a band outside several nights a week, usually Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And Elena, last year, they pulled up that trailer about Memorial Day to, you know, I think, serve drinks out there or something. And I think they start until midsummer, you know, and that didn't take off very well, but, you know, they built some benches and it, you know, looked like they were gonna do something. So, this year, they added a musician with an amplification system that stands next to the trailer, and I could hear it in my house with windows and doors closed. So, you know, I did call the livability officer, Sergeant Ambus, and he said, oh, just call and tell us about it, and we'll send somebody out there. And actually, the following week, I did, and they transferred Charleston County dispatch. Is, I think they dispatched for the city officer, okay. And then they, then they sent, I guess, sent somebody. So, I called about eight o'clock, you know, about quarter to nine, the music might turn down. They, they closed down at nine. They play the music from six to nine. And so, I, you know, it goes on every week, and I think I talked to Sandy once and said, you know, what, is there an ordinance, and what do we do? And, you know, I, last week, I got Douglas Kerr's office to send me the ordinance, which, you know, is kind of somewhat vague. It seems like, you know, music is allowed, amplification is, is allowed, but, you know, is under, you know, but not too loud. So, you know, I don't know how it could be controlled, or who says it's too loud, if the officer says that, if certations are issued, if it's ignored, and so if it's controlled in some way. So, I'd like the council, when I think about it, see some way to address it. Maybe, maybe no music, no music amplified, no music outside. You know, they, they have the restaurants, the main businesses. I know Morgan's Creek had an issue, similar issue, you know, but this is at the quiet end of the island, I guess, and it's the first time in ever, is best to my knowledge, and I've owned this property 20 years, you know, this has come up. So, it seems like, you know, they're stepping up the game. And so, you know, I'll call livability every week if that does something. I don't know if it will. So, looking for answers.
Well, I would encourage you to follow the steps you want. Call livability. The police take this very seriously. We worked very hard with Morgan Creek Grill. They did a lot to conform and make the neighbors, like yourself, happy.
Mm-hmm. See, Bert goes.
And I would suggest you just stay on it, and if necessary, visit the Public Safety Committee meeting if you're not satisfied, and they'll step it up even further.
Okay.
But we want you satisfied.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Sure.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? You're raising your hand. Okay.
I didn't know if I was, wait for everybody else, sir. Thank you for seeing me, guys. My name is Troy Pisa Terry. I'm the Director of Development for SEAL Kids. SEAL Kids is a nonprofit dedicated to helping the children of the Naval Special Warfare Community. What we do is provide educational and behavior analysis and help with these children. And what I'm proposing to you guys, I would like to, on September 9 of this year, is have a fundraiser here on Isle of Palms. And the fundraiser, all the funds will go to benefit this nonprofit. The way the fundraiser would be set up is a competitive swim with about 200 swimmers. The start and finish would be right in front of the VFW and the Windjammer. And then after that, the guys, the owners of the Windjammer have allowed us to have a concert there that would raise a substantial amount of money for us to help these kids. We have this, I've had this planned for months. I've got permits from the Coast Guard, the DNR, even the city of Charleston. We got kind of pushed back in a corner a few weeks ago from the venue that was gonna host us, and they tripled the price on us. And so, I went and talked to the gentlemen over there, and they were nice enough to help us out. And so, I don't need money from you guys. I don't need, I just need your blessing to have this event, so we can raise money to help these kids out.
Well, I heard of this a few weeks ago, and I thought you were advised to go to the Public Safety Committee first. Is that correct?
He was given the parameters for achieving city-sponsored event status, because this event would require approval as city-sponsored event status, because it is being held on the beach. And it probably would be best for the, for them to be sent back through the Public Safety Committee for further discussion, so that, you know, review of the appropriate permits could be looked at, and considerations regarding impact. It is still sort of in the season. As you all know, we have another event in September, the Turtle Trek, that has already been approved for city-sponsored event status, very near the same time. So, it's, you just kind of come to council with, without having gone through the committee process. And I know they probably got some time constraints here for approval, but, you know, in addition to the approval, and I believe that, as Ray actually spoke with the speaker, and, you know, we do have the requirement for making sure that they have the appropriate insurance, so that the city is covered in the event there is any kind of incident.
I do have the insurance here, ma'am. I've got a quote, and all I have to do is submit payment. It's already been approved. And also, the swim has already been sanctioned by WOALSA, which is the World Open Water Swim Association, which is the end-all, be-all of open water swimming throughout the world. So, I've got, I've got that in line. I've got the insurance. All I gotta do is submit payment to them. And yes, you are right, it was a last-minute request, and I got pushed into a corner, so I apologize for rushing you guys to try to get in. But I'm just very passionate about this. I want this event to go on and help these kids. So, my apologies for that. Being a little aggressive.
I just don't have enough information to...
I do have some information.
Well, no, no, I know you're gonna flood us. I mean, I'd rather the Public Safety Committee meet, even if it's a special meeting, to entertain this. You can do one, you can do one next week.
Yeah, we can do one.
You know, it's, it's...
Monday night?
Yeah, yeah.
They're already deciding on what day. They'll have a special meeting next week for, for this subject, to go through all of the details with the city staff, plus the committee, and then, you know, if necessary, we'll call a special meeting of councils.
Excuse me, one second. You're gonna be out of town?
I'll be here Monday.
Barb, are you gonna be in town?
Monday's good.
Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll grant a time and...
So, if you can meet with the committee on Monday, after their deliberation, Marty will let us know whether we're gonna have a spec, whether I should call a special meeting of council to do this.
Next Monday, sir?
If you...
Yes.
Do you have availability that day, or do you have...
I will make availability, yes.
Barb?
We normally have it at two in the afternoon. Is that...
Pardon me?
Two in the afternoon?
Two o'clock in the afternoon.
Oh, that would, that'd be fine. I'm sorry, yes. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Upstairs.
You have, you have to realize, my grandson is a SEAL kid.
Okay. Is he really?
He's the son of a SEAL.
Okay. Well, that means you should just be able to approve it there, Mayor, right?
That makes you a walrus.
Right, that's funny.
He's nine months old and started swimming lessons yesterday. Nine months.
Doing last yet?
This world has gone beyond my comprehension.
We're gonna have to ask you to come forward. We need for you to give your name and address, please.
Thank you.
My name is Buddy Gillam. My address is 1217 Hidden Lakes Drive, Mount Pleasant. I am the post commander at Post 3137, who you all know is right next door to the Windjammer. And we're very active in community service and supporting, as our mission says, our veterans and their families. So, I just wanted to add Troy's project, his mission, and the ceremony. We will be there with them, and we will open our doors along with the Windjammer to support this program. Troy didn't mention, Troy is a Navy SEAL, okay? And he's, you know, no longer a Navy SEAL, but we just wanted to show our support and know, let's see, Patrick down there, as we do with the, the exchange club, and with our community support veterans. And so, I just wanted to say that we will be there. We will be, we're proud to be a part of that ceremony, and I hope we can make it happen.
Very good. Are you, are you swimming?
I will.
Are you talking to me?
No.
No, I, I'm like a...
Yeah, yeah, I'll be at the, I'll be at the Hidden Lakes Pool. I can swim across the pool.
Y'all did hear the mayor was an associate of SEAL, so maybe the mayor should swim, too.
There you go.
I can give you some...
It's a challenge. You got the post commander and the mayor. What more do I...
We'll sit on the deck and have a...
Thank you.
While they do it.
Thank you, Troy.
That's the best I can do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. In addition, in citizens' comments, we did, I don't know if they wanted to speak to it, we did get everybody in council, got a position, a statement from Michael and Laura Johnson. I know they're here tonight, but we're gonna enter this in the minutes. Anyhow, did you wanna speak to it, or no?
No.
But they're, they're very vocal and passionate here on the issue of our single-family residence area, and the issue of Airbnb and its influx into the city. And so, that'll be in the minutes for everybody's digestion and, and concern. And, well, everybody's seen that. Anyone else wishing to address council under citizens' comments? No? No? All right. Let's move on. Okay. We had Ways and Means, and fresh off the printer, I'm gonna report that Ways and Means for end of May. Our revenue is running at 83% of budget. Virtually all areas are ahead of prior year. We're 105% of our budgeted income revenues from prior year. Property tax is really at our budgeted level, and most of the others are there. The only one that's a little bit less is running at 97% of prior year is our rental licenses, and I expect that will catch up here in the month of June, as the rental season is upon us. But all the others are looking strong. Our expenditures, we should be at 92% of budget through the general fund various departments. We are running at 85%, so we're running well ahead of our, or below, if you will, our expenditures from a general fund standpoint. That's all good news. From a cash standpoint, we're slightly over a million dollars more than we were this time last year in the general fund. In our, overall, the city is sitting here with $13.7 million of city's money. From last year, we had $13.7. This year, we have $15.5 million of city money. We do hold $5.1 million of monies from other stakeholders, this having to do with the beach re-nourishment project that will be coming forward. So, so we're sitting and available to execute a budget, which is very aggressive in the course of next year in many projects, so the fund balances will be moving accordingly. But we're well positioned on our current accounts. Our tourism funds, I'll just mention that our accommodations fee receipts were up significantly, up 30% over last year for the month of May, which is rather remarkable. But that puts us at 2% up over the prior year, which is good news, because we've been running relatively flat up until last month. Our hospitality tax is year-to-date running 6% ahead of prior year, which, and last month virtually set a record at $85,000 in food and beverage in May. So, there's no question, people are eating and drinking while they're here on the island. So, that's good news. We have collected all that we're going to collect from Charleston County on accommodation stacks. They have passed to us $520,000, which is good news. They did it one time instead of in two. I don't understand why, but they, they cut one check instead of two checks this year, and so we got the money ahead of time. Sometimes I can't figure them out. This is one of them. Our beach preservation fee continues to move in line, locks up with our accommodations tax, and we've collected $734,000 so far in FY '17. Nothing additional on the state side of things. When we looked at our projects, when we looked at the beach restoration project, not much has been expended. But I can report that we are in receipt of a letter from the state Parks, Rec, Tourism. The state is going to participate to the tune of $3,382,816, to be precise, in the beach restoration project that we're contemplating. So, that gives us a total of about 11,000, about 11 and a half million, excuse me, not thousand, 11 and a half million dollars presently on hand with the state commitment. Although, we have to sign the letter and send it back to them, but that's, that can be done easily. And then we have an outstanding request with FEMA that will provide us additional funds, and so we will have a worthwhile project going forward. We can't, we have received our, our permit from OCRM, so the state has issued the permit for this project. We now await the core project permit. The core always follows the state, so we had to get the state first. But they shouldn't be too far behind, as the requirement on the state project, state permit, is we cannot start before October 1st, and we must finish by the end of March. So, we have a window there of six months in which to execute a project. And hopefully, we have no storms in the meantime. But we're moving forward in that regard. We did talk about the washdown project, vehicle washdown project, which is going on over here, if people aren't familiar with the area, over in the public works area. And it is moving, I expect some additional payments. We paid, made the payment number four in the month of June already, but we'll be making, they're making significant progress, I believe. But it will continue into next year's fiscal year, so it will be in July before we finish. And we've contemplated that, I hope, in the budget. So, that project is moving forward. So, we went on to consider a recommendation from the Public Safety Committee to a sole-source contract award to Marina One Corporation for one rescue, one connector boat, motor, and trailer in the amount of $32,478, less the trade-in value for the current rescue boat, which Marty pointed out is vintage 1995. Yeah. So, not too much gonna happen there. So, I'll make a motion for the award of that contract. Second. Motion and seconded. Any discussion? None heard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Consideration award of a contract for $12,894 to Berkeley Heating and Air Condition to replace the HVAC unit at the rec center. Make that as a motion.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Norma Jean is nervous right now as to whether she's gonna have air conditioning or not. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you're good, Norma Jean.
She's cool.
Consideration award of a contract not to exceed $50,000 for architectural engineering services for the proposed fitness center, for the, for the rec center, for LS3P. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
And seconded. This will get us to a bidable documents, and then we can make a decision subsequently if we want to go forward. So, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three noes. Thank you. We're up to consideration of a contract to amend civil site environmental in the amount of $30,000. This relates to Phase II drainage, which is 45th to 52nd Avenue. Stormwater drainage, moving it all the way back to the, back to the marina, actually. So, this is the engineering work. We are now in pre-bid stage.
Correct.
We've had a pre-bid meeting and had a number of contractors come forward, so we're, we're hopeful of, of good bid results. So, I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
One second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And then a recommendation?
Thank you all that...
Yes. Well, Donnie, Donnie does, if this project goes forward, he won't have to put the pumps out there every time it rains, so that's...
On every street.
Yeah, every avenue, and then move them from one to the other. I mean, it's, it's a labor of love, I guess.
Of something.
Perspective on that one.
Not necessarily love. Recommendation Real Property Committee to allow for parking kiosks to, to the operations, starting March 1st and ending the third week in October, starting in 2018.
Second.
Make that as a motion and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three noes. Okay, and I think that finished.
ATM.
ATM.
Where the heck did that go? Did I miss anything?
Number six.
Number six.
Only agenda. You're skipping.
I have an old agenda. Oh, sorry.
Okay, we kept along with you.
Oh, thank you. Consideration of a contract to amend ATM's contract, yeah, I should've gone there. I take, put notes on it. Consideration contract to amend with ATM for additional services relating to marina enhancement in the amount of $25,125. This will do two things. This will enable us to prepare for a second phase of the boating infr- or is it Phase II, or what do they call it?
Tier two.
Tier two. Whatever. A different tier for the boating infrastructure, grand, up to $125,000. This will have to do with just a fuel dispensment at the marina. And then the additional funding will be for preparation and actual attendance, and conducting public awareness meetings for the referendum on the marina enhancement project. So, I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
And seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Or no? Okay. Okay, and then we've reported on additional purchases that have been awarded. We've awarded Charleston Powersports the amount of $12,500 for Sea-Doo Ski Jet. We've awarded a contract to MTJ Sports, South Carolina, in the amount of $12,750 for replacement of four outside basketball posts, backboards, and goals. I don't know why, you know, I mean, I don't need more than one at a time, but four, I guess, is okay. All right, and then we went on to award a contract to Access Rec in the amount of $14,999.71 for access mats for beach paths. And those beach paths were 31A and somewhere else. I don't remember. 37. So, thank you. So, that was, that concluded our Ways and Means meeting. So, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Sandy.
Going back to our preservate, our beach preservation.
Yes, ma'am.
Now that we're receiving about half of what we budgeted for from the state, then we budget like 6 million from them.
Correct.
Correct. And we only got three. How does that affect the project?
Well, we budgeted none from FEMA.
Right.
And when we get the FEMA funds, we will have a fully funded project.
They're gonna fund the other 3 million?
We don't, we don't...
We, we don't know exactly what they're going to fund, but it's in that order of magnitude.
Okay. So, we have to wait for that before we look at what kind of...
Yeah, I mean, we expect, we, I was hoping we'd have it at this meeting. We don't have it, but, you know, I expect the next days, maybe a couple of weeks. I can't, we can't push them in there, and we've been pushing them. But I expect we'll be there.
The scope of the project will be determined on how much money
Correct.
we bring in.
Correct.
The position of the, the city is still at 2.0...
Roughly 2.0.
Correct. City's amount has not changed.
We haven't changed.
That hasn't changed, okay.
Is that the note? We're gonna go into debt for this, right?
Correct. 1.2 million is what we, unless you have monies.
Unless you have a check.
We're borrowing for it from the beach preservation fee. That's where, that's where we would source it from.
One of the questions I have, I mean, if, 3.5 million dollars, but we're starting from 53rd Avenue all the way on down, and the beach at 53rd Avenue to 57th Avenue is actually very healthy. It starts getting bad just above the Grand Pavilion. So, I mean, if we had to save some money, that's one...
Nobody was gonna put sand at 53rd Avenue. That's not...
Well, that was just...
It's just part of the project.
The project permit is 53rd, because it's often, the erosion zone defined by OCRM is 53rd Avenue to, to breach inlet. So, we've all, not to breach inlet, to, to ease. So, that's always the permitting area. But if it doesn't need sand, we don't put sand.
That's the point I'm trying to make.
No, no, we are, yes. We can show you...
I don't need to show you. I understand.
Okay. I consider you the amount of sand on every 20 meters.
Another question. Did I understand correctly when you were explaining why we didn't get the full amount? We only got 48% because they looked at our shoreline up to Wild Dunes, and that Wild Dunes was not considered public access, or whatever term they used.
They took, they took a measurement as the, they have a definition of what is public access, and they measured from 57th Avenue, basically.
57th Avenue, at, with a 57th access, which is not exactly 57th Avenue.
Which, which moves into Wild Dunes, the available area. And it turns out, the area that was allowed represents 48% of the sand that's needed on the project, 48.8, to be precise. And that was calculated by them with the engineers, so.
Now, any, is any of this sand gonna be used at the north end of the island?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
That's western.
Over the west side?
The western.
Breach inlet.
No, not.
We, we don't have any funding source for, for that end of the island. If, you know, if needed, we gotta find, find a way to fund it.
The state has already given us what they're gonna give us, and we're gonna use it at the other end.
That's all we've applied for. We could, we could apply, I asked them, can we apply for more funds, if necessary, for the area of 14th Avenue to, to breach inlet? And I'll tell you frankly, the answer was, we don't have any money left. I know he's recording, but I don't believe that. You know, I think... You know, I think they, they have all up and down the coast, they know areas that are going to need funding, but haven't made their applications yet. So, if we ran in there and had a way to, to sneak in, if you will, we could get ahead of others. But they see things coming that's gonna use all of the funding that was allowed in the last round, and frankly, they see applications for all the monies that were allowed in this most recently passed budget, which was five million dollars. So.
So, that would just be another application process.
If we, if we, if we felt the need and had matching funds, which is a big question, then, I wouldn't hesitate to ask for the state funds, because I think we'd jump ahead of a lot of other people. Some of the other projects that were contemplated haven't happened, because frankly, the bids have come in significantly higher than they anticipated, and so they really didn't have adequate funding, and all sorts of stories go on, so anyhow.
One has to have the, the fifty percent of the total cost even to apply. So, we would have to basically assemble half of the cost to do the, the western end before we even made application. I do believe we were the third, about a third project to be funded by then, under this new source of money.
I was gonna say second, because we know there's a third right behind us. Polley's Island is, was right behind us.
I was counting Edstow and Edstow State Park as two.
Okay, I counted that as one. Alright, you're more precise, but, okay. Alright, any other questions? Move on to Public Safety, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna try to be brief. Public Safety Committee met Monday, June fifth. Under citizens' comments, we had a couple of folks from Wild Dunes, one chairs their Public Safety Committee, making us aware of the problem within parking near where the Wild Dunes Beach Access is, and the police department will be looking into it. It's, it's not really a problem, it's a vision problem, it's kind of an unsafe situation, so the police can look into that and see what needs to be done to, to rectify it.
I think Donnie's already, the people out there are cutting it.
Thank you, thank you, Donnie. We talked about a, I'm sorry, Mr. Page here, talked about the encroachments on the right of way. City's efforts have been focused on removing hard encroachments like railroad timbers or metallic protrusions from the ground, not, not vegetation, just so you'll know what's going on. And it's, it's summertime, our folks are kind of involved in things other than looking for encroachments on the highway, so that'll be slowing down a little bit, and we'll get on with our, our regular policing, the wonderful tourist trade that we have. Status of overgrown lots, three been cleared, one's partially cleared. We've got two certified letters that are out, and they still have, within the thirty-day response period, and they're making an effort to get in, get the county to clear one of the lots. An update on the Code Red service. Chief Graham enlightened us of the fact that Everbridge Service is a program offered by Charleston County that some of our residents have enrolled in. If you wanna go to the city's website, iop.net, and look for the link under the island section of the city's website, which is the most frequently visited, it tells you how to sign up for that service. You'll be notified automatically in case of inclement weather, weather or whatever. We talked about considering banning balloons from the beach. The chief is looking into several ordinances to come up with the one that would work best for us. As a side to that, I did turtle walk with my wife two weeks ago, and picked up basically four different colors of balloon pieces on that one mile stretch, so there's, there's a bunch of stuff out there. We were going to consider beach, a beach wrestling tournament in the fall of this year. No one came up to talk to us about it, so it's still in limbo. You heard about the rescue one connector boat we're going to be getting? We did a review of golf cart regulations. As you know, this is the time of the year when you see more golf carts out in the street, and especially in the interior of the island. Just be careful out there. One thing that really bothers me is seeing people driving golf carts with children sitting in their laps, small, small toddlers, babies. There, there's no law against it, but we all know what the results of a collision could be, something like that. Golf carts can't be driven after dusk. Same rules apply for truck, your ability to drive a golf cart has to drive a regular vehicle. You have to be sixteen, have a driver's license, have to have insurance, all of that, so, so please be aware of that. I would hate for a teenager be stopped and potentially given some sort of citation that would be in the file to where when he goes to get his driver's license, he's already gonna have a mark against him. Then we went, we talked about changing, had a request to change the off-leash hours for dogs on the beach to four in the afternoon until ten in the morning, year-round, which we only discussed. It'll, it'll move no further than that. We wanted the highlights of the departmental reports. We had a swimmer in distress that safely made it across breach inlet. Responded to an attempted suicide, which was averted. They also responded to a cardiac arrest at County Park. We had a structured fire. Fire responded to a total of one hundred and forty-four calls, of those forty-three were EMS calls. Personnel averaged thirty-one hours of training. The department's in a transition period as Battalion Chief Mayback is retired, and training, our new chain, training chief is Chief Hathaway. Twenty-five station tours. J T Hall was recent, who was recently captain, was named to the dean's list as he produced his college degree.
Keep it up.
We moved on to the police department. Had personnel lost about a hundred, three thousand, five hundred dollars worth of goods that were taken out of their Ocean Boulevard home, so please keep it going.
Wasn't you, Bob, was it?
No, no, not much.
Don't need to bother, right?
Could have to peel the wallpaper. On, on May twelfth, the theft of the golf cart was reported. This was a ninety-five-year-old veteran who uses his golf cart to go to the V F W, to go to the state cookouts and get something to eat. The good news is, it was found in Mount Pleasant. Someone tried to sell it on Craigslist. Unfortunately, they figured out that somehow they were gone by the time the police got there. It wasn't a phone number or anything involved, it was one of these meet-me type things. In one incident, in front beach, towards the end of the day was when boys stole thirteen bikes from one of the shops down there, they were to rent. They were all recovered on the beach, and of course, the thirteen kids scattered. Sergeant Matt Storin and Private PFC Dylan Reynolds received the bronze DUI enforcement zero award lapel pins. We had our officers attend some Cub Scout meetings. During the month of May, they responded to five thousand, eighty-four calls, of which three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four were for the police department. They wrote eighty-three tickets. Animal control, ten citations and four warnings were issued. Two recruits completed their training at the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy, and they're beginning their twelve work, week field experience training. The livability report showed the city received thirty-nine noise complaints, eight of which received citation, and fifteen received warnings. There were also two coyote sightings. Our next regular meeting date will be August seventh, but as you heard earlier, we'll be holding a special meeting on Monday, the twenty-sixth, at two o'clock, to discuss the SEAL Kids' requests.
Okay. Any questions for Public Safety? Alright, let's move on to Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works met on June seventh with a quorum present, and the press and public were notified. Minutes of May third were unanimously approved. We went on to have some citizens' comments from Ann Mahan and Brett Jones. Ann had been very active in getting the lots cleared, she was anxious about that. She came basically to thank everybody, because it was being done, and so we've heard from Public Safety that the chief has been involved with that. There's still some that have not concurred, but they will. Brett came in to talk about the dumpster behind the dinghy, and we discussed this, and he had some pretty detailed plans that he wanted several of the committee members to go look at that site and see what he was talking about, and several of us have. So, at our meeting on July seventeenth, we'll talk more in detail about it and how we might be able to move that dumpster, so that it's not as a negative impact on both the dinghy and the, the city itself. And it kind of represents a real collaborative between businesses on the front beach and the city to try to, to find a, a progress route. We had the director's report, which included that beach debris is mounting, as is garbage, as compared to lower debris in the residential areas. So, Donnie has his hands full, even though we have the contract with Bill Shupp on the beach, the number of chairs and umbrellas and those sort of metal pieces that Donnie's folks have to pick up has, has gotten more. Vehicle maintenance remains fluid, but within budget. And also, we discussed the fact that the waterway path has been cleared, and now we're gonna look to some of the residents to help keep it that way. We had a change order for hit on the MPDES project, but it hasn't been finalized, so that'll come to us at a, a different date. The C S E contract amendment, we already talked about that, and that amendment passed, so we don't need to comment any further on that one. There is a citizen wishing to pipe a ditch, and so the director has had some contact with him to tell him the implications of it's not just putting in a pipe and covering it up. So, we agreed, the committee agreed to meet with this citizen when and if he gets back on the island, who's on vacation at the time. We asked Donnie to kind of give us his top three challenges during the, the peak season. And number one for him is to keep the beaches clean. And again, as I mentioned, it's above and beyond what Bill Shupp does with his contract. But there's, if you walk along the beach, you will find the containers just overrun with, with metal things that, that are not garbage. The second thing is debris pickup, especially during the peak season, because we now have the garbage being picked up twice a week. So, Donnie's folks have to kind of fit in, in between that twice-a-week garbage collection, all the debris in the residential areas. And then, last but not least, was the underground storage tank compliance, and this was a real eye-opener for me, because Donnie is the only compliance officer that we have on site, on the, the city grounds. Those tanks have to be inspected, and if they don't pass inspection, then you cannot have any fuel delivered to them. So, Donnie has to do all six of the tanks that we have on this island, and he's the only class four operator that we have, which led us to some discussions later on about some real contingency efforts in staffing that we need to look at going forward. We then talked about a new position, an administrative position for Public Works. There used to be a secretary there, so years ago, back in two thousand and four, I think, Donnie. There has been no administrative help, except what can be done here in City Hall, and they kind of pick and choose and do what they can. So, we're looking at that, but what, as we discussed it, we thought that the continuity of services, especially dealing with the class A operator status, we needed to look at the whole department, and we may not just need an administrative assistant, that may be the tip of the iceberg, but we wanna look at all of the staffing. And I don't know whether that should come to Personnel Committee to be discussed first, or if it should stay with, with Public Works. But either way, we need to have a long-term plan to look at what the needs of personnel is in Public Works. We then looked at whether or not there could be some additional verbiage on the beach signs that we're contemplating at the end of the season, because the littering has really gotten bad. And I, I know that some of the other committees are looking at ways that we can kind of make the citizenry, you know, aware that we need to pick up garbage, if you see it, pick it up, if you have, you know, not just beach sweeps, but anytime there is. I think Donnie and his group and Bill Shupp are doing the best they can, but I know just walking along Waterway Boulevard, I can feel a garbage can full of Wendy's and whatever other cups and, and things that are just tossed out along Waterway. So, let's just be aware of the littering and see what we can do as, as citizens. But also, we, we talked about having a campaign of awareness, whether it be through social media, or up on the boards, or on our website, just to call attention to the fact that we are all responsible for picking up litter as we see it. We don't mean to spend a whole lot of money on something in a marketing thing, but just something that makes aware that this is Keep I O P Clean Month, or something of that sort, and we make a real concerted effort during that time. Our next meeting will be July seventeenth, not August, as is stated in the minutes. We are going to have a meeting July seventeenth at eleven, and principally to review the details on that, the dinghy dumpster that I was talking about before. We wanna really see if we can't move on that, and also to keep updated on the MPDES, since it's going slowly, and we know there's change orders coming, we wanna just keep on top of it. So, we felt we needed to meet in July.
Okay, thank you. Alright, please.
I'd just like to say one thing, I'd like to commend the, the island turtle team for the good job they do every morning. Those ladies go out and they, they are looking for the turtle nests, but they are also picking up trash, and we have over a hundred of those turtle ladies, so they're.
Not all ladies.
I know, I know.
Alright.
I ask one question.
Sure.
This is the time of year where palm fronds are sprouting out their, their shoots, and there are some companies that go out there and do it for people, I have them do it for me, and they haul the stuff off, but residents, they put it out by the road. I think that our commercial vendors should always haul off what they cut off, you know, private contractors, and that might free up some of Donnie's pickup stuff. Something to consider for the future.
Well, we've, we've discussed this in the past, and actually looked at, you know, having each contractor do his own, but then it was felt that, well, the residents would feel that they were being doubly charged, because they pay for public service pickup, and why should they then get additional charges from their contractor when they have to pick it up also? So, we've talked about it, but we can go back and look at it again.
This has been discussed forever, and of course, part of the problem is, you don't know who put it out there. Was it a resident who cut it down, or did he hire somebody?
Sometimes you can tell.
Well, you know, the bigger the pile, the less likely it's the resident, except in my house. What a big pile out there.
You come to my house?
I don't climb, no. I can get, I got thirty palm trees. But that's, that's part of the problem, is how, how do you ever get to an enforcement capability?
And, you know, and I had to call Donnie also on some properties where people are doing their own construction work inside the house. their own construction work inside the house. So you see out on the street, you know, everything from plaster boards to toilets to sinks because they're doing it themselves. They're putting all this contractor stuff on it. I think, you know, that's, again, asking Donnie's folks to do a lot more than they really need to be doing. But they're self-contracting, so there's not much you can do about it.
Yeah.
Donnie does a great job, period.
Yes, he does.
Stay healthy, Donnie. All right, let's move on to Recreation, please.
Okay. The Recreation Committee met on Wednesday, June 7th. All members of the committee were present, and the public had been duly notified in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. We approved the previous month's minutes with no corrections and went directly into our Director, Norma Jean Page's monthly report. The Week Camp in Camp Summershine is in full swing, and just people rave reviews. Everybody loves it. It's mostly island residents, which is just makes it a very, very special day camp for people. The sand sculpting competition was a big success. We had 48 teams participating. Music in the Park was very, very successful. We have some upcoming events, which is the Isle of Palms Beach Run in July. You can go online and register for that, and the Eclipse Event. There will also be some other camps, volleyball camp, basketball camp, soccer camp, art camp over the summer, and a Shakespeare camp, so. And Norma Jean reported that she had done an information survey regarding the fitness room and had done some, worked some numbers and tried to determine how much revenue we could bring in per year if we do, if we charge people to use the fitness room. So there's a lot of good information, and we're really looking at all options on getting this fitness center built and making it so that it's very affordable and works for everyone. One of the things that was interesting was most of the people who responded to the survey were in the age bracket between 35 and 55 years old, which is a group that's not always served as well as we would like. So that was something we felt like was really a good, good piece of just information for us. We talked about the bid opening, which was June 13th, and we've already voted on that. And then we did discuss the Eclipse Event. We got an update on that, which is August 21st at Front Beach. We're going to have a lot of great activities out there, a band, but also just all kinds of good things going on down there. It's going to be from 11:30 to 4:30. We will hand out the glasses for that. So a lot of people have been asking, where do you get the glasses? Where do you get the glasses? You can get the glasses at the event or probably at City Hall or at the rec center before the event. So that's really, and we'll have tons of water for people because it's going to be hot August 21st. And we will have East Coop's Bar Hospital there too with a first A-ten, so just in case. Just in case. You can never be too cautious. Our next meeting is Wednesday, August 2nd at 9:00 AM in the conference room. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. How many pairs of glasses are we getting?
A lot. Thousands.
Is that enough?
Yeah.
I understand the island is going to be, I don't want to say overrun, but it's going to be, who was it? Somebody, maybe somebody forwarded me something where they expect it to be bigger than July 4th.
Yeah.
I'm not sure it can be bigger than July 4th.
Where are they going to park?
Exactly. You know, they'll be backed up across the connector, and nothing will be moving because there'll be no place on the island for them. But unless you want to stand up there and tell them to turn around and go back, no way to do that.
Our citizens are leaving right now in their house.
They can rent their house?
The law people. So it's going to be big.
Okay.
Hope it doesn't rain.
It's still going to get dark, whether it rains or not, it's still going to get dark. There's no way we're going to turn that off. Okay, Personnel Committee, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We met June 7th at 2:00 PM the afternoon. The only significant things is the attorneys are still working on the handbook, employee handbook, and they have a November deadline, a segue to Public Works discussion, looking at getting the Director Pitts some assistance. An idea that was promulgated was that he would share the new halftime person, make that a full-time position with the anticipated retirement of the Assistant Director. But we're looking at that in 2019, so it's just pretty much an alert to, alert you to that may be happening, and we'll have time to clarify and make a very definitive what that role would be. Did you have anything to say about that, Mr. Pitts? Okay. Now's the time to make your pitch. All right. As far as public safety winners, Recreation was Holly Horton. Fire Department was Captain J.D. Hall. The Police Department was Captain Jeff Swine. And Public Works was Joseph Washington. In terms of personnel, we have one firefighter, and we're going through the interview process right now. We have four, as we stated earlier, four beach service officers, and we still have one part-time animal control officer that we're seeking. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Personnel? Don't see any. Let's move on. Real Property Committee, minutes, since it was so short, we don't have minutes in our hands, but Barb will share with us everything.
Real Property Committee met June 15th with all members present. Under citizens' comments, several people spoke concerned about the possibility of having overnight camping at Front Beach. All who spoke were opposed to the concept. The majority of the concept comments in citizens' comments were directed at the marina, the problems of boat congestion, the challenge of keeping the business of the marina within the marina footprint. With parking now limited on waterway, parking within the marina is more difficult than ever. We moved on to new business. We discussed the uses or possible uses for the Front Beach parking lot to create some revenue in the off-season. After some discussion, it was decided not to move forward on the possibility of overnight camping. The next idea that we consider is the possible use of off-season boat storage. The city has done some research on the cost and revenues for possible boat storage. We will reach out to Wild Dunes to see if there's a need or desire for a place to store their boats on the island. In case you don't know, residents of Wild Dunes cannot store anything on their lot, right? No trailers or.
Can't be visible, yes.
Visible.
Which makes it virtually.
Right. So we'll continue to discuss the possibility of boat storage next month. After a short discussion on increasing the paid parking two weeks, spring and fall, we voted for it, and we passed that along tonight. Under the tenants' comments, the city was asked to intervene to referee the parking challenges that occurred over Memorial Day weekend. It's the position of the city that we stand by the leases as written, and the tenants have to work out their differences. These challenges will hopefully be mitigated once the new marina plan is implemented. Under new business, the greenery, the new city landscapers met with the committee to speak to the expectations of this committee with the new vendor. Tom Murray spoke to the issue and his hopes for improving the landscaping for the entire island, which he seemed very enthusiastic, and we were too, so hopefully it's going to work out very well. We talked about some new beach access signs. We have a purveyor of these signs that will honor the price given, but we're not going to do anything with them until fall. They're too busy, and it's the height of the season, so that'll happen in the fall. Then we went on with ATM and discussed the marina plan. As you heard, or you heard from the mayor, we did not receive the grants that we had hoped for. So after that, we started thinking about, it almost could be a blessing in disguise. It will give us much more flexibility to create more dock space for residents and not be as concerned about transit boats. We also decided to create a city dock that could be used for grandpa and his grandson fishing. It could be used for putting a paddleboard in or a kayak, and that location would be at the tidal wave dock, moving the existing tidal wave dock over further away from the Smith residence. We discussed the upcoming referendum and the need for some graphics to educate the public, and we discussed that for also in Ways and Means. All the current tenants' rents are current. All the tenant's current, tenants' current, they're all, they're all, it's all in the bank.
What were you trying to say?
Next meeting is July 10th. Thank you.
Okay.
All tenants' current are current on their lease.
A suggestion, Barb, for your committee. You mentioned the boat storage at the lots. The notion behind the lots that we all recognize or underutilize is there's a nexus between what we can do with those and the creation of additional business for our businesses, especially at Front Beach. Rather than do an informal case-by-case basis, whether it's RVs or boats or something else, why not hold a public forum and solicit comments from citizens and the businesses, what might be done there to add value, to have best use for those lots that would support the business community? And if that doesn't garner things that we think we can support, then as you and I have discussed in the past, go out with a request for information to the larger business community and solicit their ideas of some alternatives that we could consider.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will say we made changes of the parking in the general area of the marina. Morgan Creek Grill, as I understand, has successfully moved a lot of their employee parking to the rec center. By my observation, I haven't done a statistical account, very, other than Memorial Day weekend, very few folks have parked illegally on Waterway Boulevard, or to a certain extent, illegally on 41st also. Those that are parked on Waterway Boulevard are typically island residents. Those that aren't, you know, they're faced with a citation. But the last weekend, there was one, and three island residents were parked there. Prior weekend, the same, same story. I think there were two and three island residents. So whatever we've been doing is beginning to take hold. I can't speak for July 4th weekend, and what happens anywhere on the island, that will be a current point. But as far as the ongoing weekend activity, it seems to be in much more disciplined order than what it has been in the past. So kudos to everybody that's involved in making that happen. Senator.
I've got a question. If you go down to the marina, every single parking place is marked. It's either boats and cars, or it's tenants, or it's restaurant, or it's wave sports or exhibitions, whatever. Where is there public parking? If somebody just wants to go to the marina and is not involved in any of those activities, where is there public parking?
Well, frankly, those people that want public parking tend to go down there in their golf cart. If there's any particular, we can find 10 or 12.
In a car, where do you, where's the public parking for the marina?
What would you be going for that doesn't solicit your interest in an activity?
You're going to go there and walk the docks or sit out on the.
You can't get on the docks.
Yes, you can.
Oh, there's a gate. Well, okay.
You can.
Yeah, okay, but you're going to walk the docks.
You can go down by the, by the Morgan Creek and go down those docks where the exhibition coastal is.
I suppose you'd be parking in Morgan Creek, suggesting maybe after the walk in the dock.
There's this 30-minute parking, right in front of that ramp, there's 30-minute parking.
But my point is, there's, there's nothing that is not assigned to an enterprise.
That's why we need to get.
That's why.
Everything is assigned to an enterprise. So it's not like a resident can just go down to our marina and sit in their car if they want to, or do whatever they want at the marina. I mean, it's just all designated. And I'm hoping that in this, the next picture we get, there is going to be some allotted space for public parking for people that.
Well, I think, I don't think the parking schematic is going to really change from what you've seen, and it's not, they're not going to.
Well, I think they're going to eliminate all the 30-minute parking in front of the marina store.
No.
It's got a big concrete, big concrete slab.
No, you're mistaken. You have to look a little closer.
Okay.
They still have their parking.
The concrete slab in front of it isn't going to take off all those?
They still have their parking.
Okay.
You know, that, that's more of a walkway needed to get from the marina the other way, but no, that parking had not been taken away, certainly.
I just, you know, it's been brought to my attention by several residents who say, I just want to go to the marina. I don't, you know, I don't have a boat.
Sit there, sit there in their car?
No.
They didn't say that.
Well, the point is.
So they're going somewhere.
I guess my question would be, these people are talking to you, have they gone to the marina and parked, and someone has said something to them?
Yes.
Yep. Happened to me.
You're not a tenant.
Well, that's because you're a disreputable.
Yeah.
But there, but there is parking around, there's that circular thing near the store, there's that little trees there. There's parking around that that's not.
That's not the tenant and the this and the that and the other? The golf carts and bikes.
I mean, I can't imagine if you weren't in the marina.
There's a couple of them.
Flakes on the inside.
There is golf cart parking there, but there is also.
A perimeter.
Just a perimeter where you can park. And again, it speaks, I think, to the need for the revitalization to get some order in that parking chaos. I mean, it's just chaos.
I would love to see, I mean, it looks like we have a delineation by virtue of where the boat launch is. If we could get the marine, everything that has to do with the boat launches and the marine and anything that's on the water to the right of that boat launch, and everything on the other side be for Morgan Creek.
I think that's originally what it is.
Well, no, it's going to, you're going to have exhibition tours over there and paddleboats.
What's exhibition tours?
The kayaks.
Coastal expeditions.
It's safer.
And you're going to have water sports.
Well, we're also going to have a city dock, and that's going to have parking for residents.
But you're still going to have all the water sports and everything all conglomerate right next to the Morgan Creek Grill.
The docks are there.
So why can't it be moved over to the, why can't all of the marine activities be isolated to the marine activities?
Because it's not safe to put people and amateurs on kayaks over where all the boats are gassing up and the Dewey's ferries coming in and out and all the traffic.
Same with the jet skis.
We've been told that over and over, that that's just an accident waiting to happen.
I think we have a lot of work to do. I'm afraid that the citizens, again, are going to be the actor.
I know. I disagree with you completely.
I hope so, Barbara, I really do.
Okay. Anything else for Real Property?
Sorry.
All right. No other items. We have minutes still pending from some of our boards and commissions. Douglas, however, is in France and is not able to produce.
Jesus.
Oh, exactly.
Ooh la la.
With his little kids.
Haven't seen, haven't seen any pictures yet. So we'll move on to introduction of new bills and resolutions in your package. I'll make a motion to approve for first reading by title only, ordinance 2017-05, an ordinance to set the advisory referendum at the next general election, dealing with issuance of general obligation bonds and not to exceed $5.5 million for the City Council of the Isle of Palms for the purpose of constructing a marina redevelopment project.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion?
Question? Explain to me, please, why is a non-binding, non-binding advisory referendum?
I believe there have all been non-binding referendums.
Not all of them.
Some have been binding.
Because, will you explain to me why is non-binding advisory referendum? Which means council could do whatever they want, no matter what the citizens say.
Which is a legislative body. We always have that prerogative.
Not unless it's binding, you don't.
But binding could have, that's a double-edged sword. You could have a binding resolution to spend, referendum to spend $5.5 million and then decide not to do it.
I'd like to get the opinion from the attorney. Thank you.
I mean, I think we usually do binding referendum when it's sort of mandated by laws. So if there's a statute that says, you know, if we're going to use some type of, you know, bond for a particular project, and especially if it goes over our constitutional limits, then we do have to go through the whole referendum process. And in that situation, I think you are looking at more of a binding state, you know, legislature mandated type of referendum. But this one is one, you know, the city could do this project on its own with or without the referendum, so it's not like it's an obligation, a statutory obligation. So I think in that sense, you know, we would typically just do an advisory referendum. I would say that if you, you know, wanted to do a binding referendum, you probably could. could, but I don't think you would want to, because then you would be bound one way or the other. You know, there would be no, no real decision if you, if you made it binding. But there's no reason to make it binding, because, you know, this is typically, you know, one of the statutory reasons for having a referendum is an advisory referendum that city councils are allowed to do just to get feedback from the public, and that's exactly the situation that we're in now, so that's...
I remember when the connector issue came up, and I believe that was non-binding, and it created a lot of mistrust from the citizens.
In what way?
They're saying, well, the city's going to do whatever the heck they want to do, no matter what, by about 52 votes.
Question.
Sure did. And it just stirred up, it stirred up the community.
Jimmy?
When the city bought the marina, we had a referendum, and it was overwhelming. Was that a binding or a non-binding referendum in 1998?
I think that was an advisory referendum as well. I think it was the same, the same thing.
So we're spending a lot of money for this study and presentation, so if the residents say no, are we going to go forward with it, or are we just going to listen to your votes and go away and still do it? That's the binding versus non-binding. I mean...
I think we all need to listen to what the citizens say and act accordingly. I have not made up my mind, I intend to make up my mind in advance of having all the information I need to make an informed decision.
I think I heard the same thing when the parking lot's down at Front Beach, and citizens came out and spoke, and here we are going forward with it, so I'm just amazed that...
What are we going forward with?
Ideas of additional revenue in earlier seasons and later seasons. I heard lots of people say no to that, yet we're going forward with it.
Well, we've been elected to, to make the laws. We can't take everything to referendum. Should we have another...
Well, I mean, but we heard the...
We've got to make a decision. We've got to make a decision. Move this into the input.
Three?
The whole room is filled. That was the biggest room at WAD.
Let's call for the vote.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of first read?
I have a question.
Please.
The numbers that we have been given are 4.6 million or 4.8 million. Why is this 5.5 million?
It's up to...
It's up to, and when we worked on the budget, one of the things that the estimates that, that had that just shy of 5 million, it only had a 10% contingency in it. As a, as a budget builder, that, that worried us, so we increased the contingency. We looked at what had been provided, we tried to think in terms of no grants, you know, and come up with a realistic not, not to exceed figure, and that's how we got to 5.5 million. And none of this bond money will be used for dredging?
Yeah, dredging is not part of this, no.
Purely for the scope of what we're talking about, the redevelopment. All right, all in favor of the first reading? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're at first reading, miscellaneous business. I did attend and got a briefing on some matters that have gone on with the state that may affect us. One is the local government fund. We'll see no more money this year than we have in the past, even though they're underfunding throughout the state. You know the gas tax is going to go in effect 2 cents this year. The pension obligation to employers, of which we are one, increased by 2%, but the legislature is actually going to reimburse all municipalities and school districts, et cetera, 1%. But that's offset by the fact that we're not getting any more local government funds, so I don't see that as a windfall for us in any way, shape, or form. The legislature, this is kind of complex, but the general elections can no longer be, if there's only one, two candidate for each position open, you can no longer just cert, the Election Commission can no longer just certify that position is being filled. There must be an election in the future. That's a correction to a law that they passed in 2007, so I don't know how many times they go around the circle, but in a general, they did not approve, but will consider again next year, making all elections in even number of years, and so that if that happens, then everybody in the state, whether it be municipal or for state offices, et cetera, would be considered for election on even numbers only. I don't know if that'll ever get out of the legislature, but that was, they made it out of the, made it out of the House and didn't make it out of the Senate.
Talk about signs.
What?
Talk about signs, if they're all held an even number of year.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. There is new obligations for us in response to FOIA requests. The, the city has been briefed on it, although...
We are actually going to be posting some information on our website concerning the new processes, too.
And so there's different days of response and different obligations, and when you get the Circuit Court involved and all that other stuff, but hopefully we're able to respond and not have to get court action to, to keep us out of trouble, so. That stuff's in play as a result of the last legislative season. So no other item brought before?
Don't close yet. Just want to remind everybody, I will be tied up in mediation for the next two days, and then Friday is South Carolina Civic and Managers Association. I will periodically be checking my electronics, but, but tied up really for the next three days. And then lastly, I wouldn't want to conclude without taking a moment to thank Jake Lucas with the Mulberry News. I think he has done a fine job of covering the city's business for the city with the Mulberry News, and he is leaving for...
I was going to say, why are you doing this? Nothing at all.
Yes, he's, he's leaving for a new life in New York City, so...
No.
No.
He'll be back in six months.
So we will, we will miss his...
Are you going to the dark side?
I know.
We'll miss his truth and actions.
All right. Thank you.
You'll be back.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Move for adjournment?[1794.44]